It's straight up six o'clock, so welcome everybody to the Wednesday, July 6, 2022, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. So for roll call, the Commissioners I have present are Padron, Townsend, Elliott, Hench, Sines, and Craig. Mr. Commissioner Nolte is not here yet. If he comes in during the meeting, I will note his entrance for the minutes preparer. Next item up on the agenda, would people like to hold the election of officers now or defer it towards the end of the meeting?
At the end.
Can we defer? Well, we can just put it farther down the end. We could put it like the new item 7.5.
Sure.
Is that all right with everybody?
Sounds good.
Okay. So election of officers is moved down after Agenda Item Number 7. So next item up on the agenda is number 4, Public Discussion of Any Item Not on the Agenda. And I don't have my glasses on, so I really can't see anybody. They're in my backpack, so I will put them on before we start. If any member of the public would like to address the Commission on an item that's not on the agenda, now is your opportunity. If you'd like, just come up to the podium.
No one is rushing to the podium.
Seeing no one rising, we shall move on to Item Number 5. This is Case Number REZ22-0008, location northwest corner of North Scott Boulevard and Rochester Avenue. This is an application for rezoning of approximately 64.37 acres of land from interim development single-family to low-density single-family with a planned development overlay, and approximately 0.31 acres of land to interim development single-family with a planned development overlay. And Parker, is this yours?
Yeah. Before we get started talking, I just wanted to reveal, disclose, that I saw this on the agenda and I contacted Sarah and Anne to see if I would have a conflict of interest. Coincidentally, I had heard that Vintage was building a senior living complex on the corner of Scott and Rochester, which isn't too far from where I live, and I went online and contacted them because I have some interest in that model of senior living, and got a reply back that this was going to be on the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and I thought, oh, uh-oh. So I just told them that, and Sarah said that she thought I did not have a conflict of interest as long as I could be impartial, which I can be.
Right. And no contract has been executed or money affected?
No, no, no.
I'll get started. Good evening, I am Parker Walsh, Associate Planner. As the Chair mentioned on tonight's agenda, I'll be going over an application for rezoning for Case Number REZ22-0008, located north of Rochester Avenue and west of North Scott Shown here is an aerial map of the property for the proposed development. Next, we have the zoning map, as well as how it fits in with the surrounding area. The current zoning is interim development, single-family, which is typically used for plant-related agriculture, provisional detached single-family homes, and also used to pause development for a property until preferred use can be developed. The proposed zoning is 64.37 acres to low-density single-family residential with a planned development overlay. RS5 provides housing for individual households, limited density due to large lot size and setbacks, and planned development process allows for a mixture of uses provided additional criteria are met. .31 acres will be rezoned to interim development, single-family with a planned development overlay, and this is to accommodate an existing cell tower that is allowed by right through a special exception in 2009. Shown here is the preliminary OPD and SADP, which includes the current existing uses on site, which is Lot 67, or 3106 Rochester Ave., and Lot 66, which is the cell tower. Recommended condition includes the dedication of an access easement to allow continued access to Lot 66, and that's shown on the plan through here. The preliminary OPD and SADP proposes 65 single-family lots, a private senior living community with an additional 12 single-family units, 3 duplexes, and 29 multifamily units. A private senior community clubhouse is also proposed. Next, I'll go into the planned development approval criteria and how the proposed development fits in with the policy vision of the city. The first approval criteria is density and design is compatible with adjacent development. Starting with density, 5 dwelling units per acre are allowed in the OPD/RS5 zone. Currently, there are proposed 112 dwellings, which includes the existing property, and that comes out to be 1.94 dwelling units per acre. The land uses proposed include single-family, two-family, and multifamily, the extension of existing single-family development pattern in the area, and concentrates more intense zoning, more intense land uses near major arterials, as you can see in this corner. Continuing Criteria 1, looking at mass scale and general layout. The applicant requested a waiver from 60-foot minimum lot width standard for units within the senior living community. The proposed modification will not result in increased traffic congestion. Garages and off-street parking will be recessed, ensuring garages do not dominate the streetscape. The applicant also requested a waiver from the duplex corner lot standard. If waived, duplexes must vary in design to prevent monotony. Staff finds that the approval criteria is met. Showing some renderings for the options residents will have to choose from. These will all be single-family, referred to as patio homes. Next, we have the duplexes. On the top, this is what would be facing the private drive, and on the bottom, this would be facing Rochester Ave. Looking at the multifamily, the top would be the front or facing the private drive. The middle here is the rear, which would be at the intersection of Rochester and Scott. And then on the bottom, we have the west side, which would be visible from Haron Drive. Looking at the clubhouse, here's the front view, the back view, and then the west side on the bottom. Continuing the first approval criteria, and now looking at open space. The applicant proposes 15,400 square feet of private open space for the senior living community, which exceeds the required 540. It proposes providing 840 square feet for each single-family home and 600 square feet for each twin home. Rezoning condition includes, staff recommends the dedication of an access easement and construction of a 10-foot wide trail to Calder Park as a condition of the rezoning. Switching over to traffic circulation, the construction of Allison Way, Haron Drive, and Private Drive for the senior living community development will be accessed off Rochester Ave., and there will be no Scott Boulevard access proposed. Traffic calming features proposed include 2 raised pedestrian crossings and roundabout. Rezoning condition includes staff recommendation that at the time of plating, traffic calming features be incorporated in locations approved by the city engineer. Approval criteria 2, development will not overburden existing streets and utilities. The subject property can be serviced by both sanitary sewer and water, and transportation staff requested a traffic study, which found 823 new daily trips at time of full development and occupancy, which was estimated to be 2026. Study found that traffic at peak hour level of service would operate at an acceptable LOSC or better rating, and the study determined that development would not overburden existing streets. Staff concurs. Continuing approval criteria 2, rezoning condition includes, staff recommends to include dedication of public right-of-way at the intersection of Rochester Ave. and North Scott Boulevard for potential future improvements that may include a roundabout. Recently, receiving new information from Public Works, the applicant submitted a concept which would require a setback modification from 40 feet to 30 feet along portions of Rochester. Staff finds that the approval criteria in 143A, 4K1A to be met, and may be hard to see on the image, but the portions that would be, have a reduced setback are shown here in the highlighted areas. Moving on to approval criteria 3, development will not adversely affect views, property values, and privacy. Proposed development continues the single-family development pattern that exists in the south of Rochester Ave., concentrates more intense uses at the intersection of 2 arterials, includes 3 outlots or approximately 33 acres to be placed in conservation easements. The closest neighbors will be to the south and to the west. To the west, which is Large Lane, would be separated by approximately 18 acres, or Outlot A. And to the south will be separated by Rochester Ave. Staff finds that this development will not impact existing residents more than a conventional Approval criteria 4, land use building types will be in the public interest. The proposal incorporates single-family, two-family, and multifamily uses, provides diversity of housing, and helps satisfying an ongoing need of senior housing. Outlots A, B, and C make up roughly 33 acres, or 50% of the land area, and will remain undeveloped. Proposed development balances environmental protection with the need for increased housing. Consistency with the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan identifies this area as conservation design and encourages preservation of sensitive areas, guide development away from sensitive areas, conservation design in areas with sensitive features, and an interconnected system of open space with wide sidewalks and trails to connect the community. Looking at the North District Plan, the North District Plan feature land use map shows a vision of single-family residential, townhomes, small apartment buildings, encourages cul-de-sacs when appropriate, encourages more intense housing near arterials, and envisions an extension of Amherst Drive across Ralston Creek. Due to the fact that land uses have changed since the adoption of Northeast District Plan, specifically with the creation of Harvest Preserve, staff is not recommending a stub street to the north that would eventually tie into Timorac Trail. Looking more into the Northeast District Plan, which calls for trail connections along waterways, around ponds, and through parks, encourages trail connection at the end of cul-de-sacs, planned trail connections between major destinations, strongly encourages trail system to connect neighborhoods with open space, a connection between Bluffwood and Hickory Hill Park, a connection between Hickory Hill Park and the neighboring park, which is now Calder Park. To support this policy direction, staff has requested a 10-foot wide trail connection to Calder Park. Development will also include a 5-foot wide sidewalk along Rochester Ave. Compatibility with existing neighborhood. Proposed development is generally consistent with the existing neighborhood character. Development would provide a continuation of single-family from south to north across Rochester Ave. Proposal locates high-density units in the southeast corner, providing a transition of uses from singer family to multifamily, and then to Old Town Village southwest of the property. Large Lane to the west contains attached single-family units, and as mentioned earlier, will have an approximate 18-acre natural buffer, which will separate it from development. Sensitive areas, a Level 2 sensitive areas viewed by the Commission and City Council is required, and that's required due to the impacts to wetlands, modification to buffers, and impacts of more than 35% on critical slopes. Looking at wetlands, the sensitive area ordinance requires a 100-foot buffer between wetlands and development. Wetland buffer averaging may be permitted when necessary and as justified by a wetland specialist. Wetland buffer reduction may also be used when necessary as justified by a wetland specialist, and the reduction proposed is only for the southwest corner wetland to accommodate the installation of a sidewalk shown here. Existing wetlands of approximately 3.03 acres with 0.43 proposed to be disturbed. Mitigation requires a replacement ratio of 1:1, which will be accomplished through off-site wetland bank credits. Moving on to slopes, of the 9.3 acres of critical slopes, 4.7 are proposed to be disturbed, or 51%. The subject property contains no protected slopes. Next, woodlands. Of the 40.3 acres of woodlands, 14 acres are proposed to be impacted, or 34.7%. Wetland buffers proposed to be impacted are 6.1%, or 15.2%, and that totals, woodlands preserved, to 20.2%, or 50.1%. Archaeological sites. The Phase 1 archaeological survey of the subject property noted that the subject property is not eligible for listing in the National Register of Historic Places. No further archaeological work is recommended for the site. Neighborhood open space. According to Section 145K of the City Code, dedication of public open space or fee in lieu of land dedication is addressed at the time of final plating for residential subdivisions. Based on 64.37 acres in an RS5 zone, the developer would be required to dedicate 1.38 acres or pay a fee in lieu of land dedication. The applicant has requested a fee in lieu of land dedication. Correspondence. Staff has received emails from neighboring residents. Concerns expressed include, single-family units 1 through 6 along Rochester Ave., which have since been removed by the applicant, traffic, and removal of woodlands. Staff recommends approval of REZ22-0008, a proposal to rezon approximately 64.37 acres of land located north of Rochester Avenue and west of North Scott Boulevard from interim development, single-family residential, to low-density, single-family residential with a planned development overlay, and .31 acres to OPD IDRS zones subject to the following conditions. Prior to issuance of a building permit, owner shall dedicate an access easement agreement to allow access to Lot 66, as shown on the preliminary planned development and sensitive areas development plan, dedicate a public access agreement to allow public trail from the proposed development to Calder Park, as shown on the preliminary planned development and sensitive areas development plan, install the 10-foot wide trail connection, shown on the preliminary planned development and sensitive areas development plan, and dedicate to the city with no compensation to the owner, additional right-of-way along Rochester Ave. and North Scott Boulevard, the area of which shall be determined by the city engineer in a form approved by the city attorney. The final plat for any of the above-described land shall incorporate traffic calming devices located in locations approved by and designed to the satisfaction of the city engineer. Next steps would include, upon recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing will be scheduled for consideration by City Council. The anticipated timeline would be July 12, 2022. Council sets public hearing, and August 2, 2022, council public hearing and first consideration. That concludes the presentation, and I'd now turn it over to the Commission.
Thank you, Parker. I have 2 questions for you. On the request for the waiver to decrease width of the residential lots to less than 60 feet, was there a reason for that other than just to put more lots in there?
Yes, the reason was, when we had the applicant put in the imaginary lot lines, it showed that the units they had proposed would not be able to accommodate a 60-foot lot width. And...
There it is. He's a bastard.
And so to make sure that they could fit the units proposed, they requested a waiver, which would require the garages be setback, and they later submitted floor plans, which showed all of the garages would be recessed.
Okay, very good. And then a question about woodlands. With 49.9% of the woodlands being disturbed, doesn't any of the development ordinances address replacement of that? Is that not discussed anywhere? I'm just drawing a blank. Is there any requirement for offsetting that?
This is Anne Russel with Neighborhood and Development Services. There is a mitigation requirement if the impact is above 50%, but since they're below that threshold, there is no mitigation required for the woodlands.
I know there is an impact, but I just couldn't remember where the cutoff was, so... Okay, very good. Commissioners, questions for staff?
I have a question. With all these new units going up, is there, none of these are considered affordable housing? Is that correct?
I don't believe so.
None will be income restricted, though all be market rate.
I should say, nothing is obligating them to provide affordable housing, whether they choose to or not, you know, is up to them, but it's not part of this process.
Okay.
Parker, and can you show again the corner? I think there was, you showed that the space, I cannot think of the word right now, is going to be cut off, but I didn't understand why. There was another picture that you showed where there's like a purple space in the corner.
Setback for 30 feet rather than 40 feet.
Thank you. Yes, yes, the setback, yes, thank you. Can you explain the reason why? Was there a change in the building, or?
That's...
Yes.
That would be to accommodate the requested additional right-of-way for a potential future roundabout, and so after Public Works contacted the applicant, they submitted this photo, which you can be seen here, and they just drafted what that may look like, that additional right-of-way, and then we noticed that the 40-foot setback would not be met along the entirety of that right-of-way, which is the need for the requested modification.
Thank you.
And if I could just add to that, just so it's clear to everyone, this was not a request that was included in your agenda packet. This was a new request that came up on Friday after the packet was published, and the Public Works staff had provided a sketch of the amount of right-of-way that they needed for the roundabout.
Just to clarify, so that modification would be secondary to requests by Public Works for their design of the roundabout?
Yes.
Very good, thank you. Additional question?
I have a question about the trail to the park, which is quite long, goes over water, I mean, it looks like there's a bridge there, and it goes through the Harvest Preserve area, which is, my understanding is, private land, and the public don't have access to Harvest Preserve, so how's that going to work?
I will probably defer to the applicant to answer that question.
So this is all Harvest Preserve-owned land at this moment, so it's part and parcel of this project.
But where the, where the trail goes...
It doesn't cut into the part that is currently used for the park, as far as I understand it.
It doesn't cut into the part where the conservation easement starts?
It has to avoid the conservation easement.
Okay.
I mean, so there's a conservation easement that is necessitated by what the mitigation activity that was required, but yeah, I don't know if that answers your question or not, but this is all...
But the public will be able to walk on that trail without any...
There will be an access easement across it.
Okay, okay.
But will it still be private? I mean, the public will have access, but it will still be in private land, right? The trail will still be in private land?
Right. They do not want to dedicate land to the city. They just want to dedicate an easement to the city.
Okay.
Okay. I mean, that answers the question, I guess. It seems a little... My other question was, no, and I think one of the emails said something about this. I mean, I really understand, I think, why it's preferred that both of the entrance-exit options are coming from Rochester, but to not even have a pedestrian option over there to Scott seems, I don't know, it just seems like it's hemming the whole development in a little bit more than is ideal. I mean, it's sort of like, you're in a giant cul-de-sac, and you can only get out to the south, not, the other option would be, I mean, you've got 2 big streets there, so I don't know. Did the staff think about that at all, or?
We did have conversations. Parker, can you pull up the larger map, please? We did have conversations about access, and we wanted, it's really hard with the environmental resources on the site and Harvest Preserve to the north to have an interconnected street network. There's also an existing conservation easement in Outlot A that restricts, you know, any, I guess, street network to the west. If you can see here, the rezoning boundary is the red boundary, and so a very small portion of the development actually fronts Scott Boulevard. So providing access to Scott Boulevard would have required them to change their rezoning boundary, and it would have also impacted the wetland that's within Outlot C. So we discussed this at the staff level and felt comfortable with the 2 accesses provided onto Rochester.
I had one more question slash comment, which I'm going to make, I mean, I feel like I've made it before, and other commissioners have made it, and I'm going to keep making it until I think the city has a good answer, and that is, there's a lot of jointly-held land here. I assume there's going to be a homeowners association or something that has to take care of all those acres, and it just concerns me, when the next derachio comes through and half the trees are laying on the ground, who's going to take care of it? Or, you know, invasive species and all that. But I just want to say it for the record, I think we need to have something that addresses those things. That's all I have.
Mr. Sines, looks like you had some comments. Do you know off the top, does the sidewalk that's existing on Scott Boulevard go all the way from Rochester north, or does it stop? It does go all the way?
It does go all the way.
And then how about on Rochester, on the southern border of this property? Is there an existing sidewalk?
Yes.
Oh, not of this property, across the street.
Right. Is there one going to be, is there one, as part of this, being required on this, along Rochester?
Yes.
Okay. And I think you answered one of my questions, which was, the trail to Calder Park will include a public easement, which will allow the public to go through the trail, and the conservation easement that is shown on the map, is that being proposed, or is that the one that's already in existence?
That is already in existence.
And are any easements, any type of easements being put on the 3 outlots in the development? I always worry when there are outlots, and they say, well, nothing will be developed, but I don't think there's anything that says they can't be. Is that correct?
They would be placed into conservation easements at final plating, which would restrict them from any future development.
So we would, we can make sure they go into...
Yes, we will make sure at plating that there'll be conservation easements.
Okay.
For Outlet A, B, and C.
Okay.
And just to reinforce my point, like, who's going to plow that in the winter time?
We've got a...
Assistant question I throw out there. That trail.
Oh, the trail.
The trail.
That's a good question.
The trail will be maintained by the city.
It will be, okay.
Any additional questions for staff from the Commission?
I have one more.
Go ahead, Sarah.
So the, talking about the sidewalk that he mentioned, if you look at the proposed sidewalk on Rochester, it looks like it's not as wide as the sidewalk on North Scott Boulevard, and I was wondering why, there's a lot of people that walk on that street, including me, so I want to know why the sidewalk is going to, is not the same size.
You know, I'm not actually sure. I know that in certain instances, we require wider sidewalks, and we did with the development of Scott, but for Rochester, I don't believe we would, we would be requiring anything more than 5 feet.
So, but the one on Rochester, the one across the street, that's also wider, right?
It is, it's, yeah, Sarah just mentioned it's 8 feet.
So it would be, so it would be... So it would be, so it would be, so it's wider across the street, but it would not be wider on that side?
The city policy is usually that one side of the street has the wider sidewalk.
Oh, okay, okay.
And five feet is still a little bit wider than most residential sidewalks, right?
It's standard. Anything less than five feet is inadequate.
Older developments are...
Older developments are...
Older developments are, it's gotta be more like three, four feet.
Yeah, certainly, but in anything new, it has to be a minimum of five.
But if you think Rochester is a very busy street, so then there's a lot of people running and walking, so sometimes, you know, wider sidewalk feels more safe.
Also people with bikes.
Additional questions for staff? Seeing none, thank you, Parker. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Now, if the applicant or the applicants are represented, come forward, and we'll, we're all ears to what you have to say. Hi, Mike?
Hello, Mike Welch with Welch Design and Development. I'm here representing the developer, and the developer, Joe Clark, is here, and also Heather from Ewing Properties is here too, so if you have specific questions about Ewing Properties on Lot 65, I'm sure Heather would be happy to answer those for you. Can you kind of get some stuff pulled up here for you, quick?
Well, thank you, Parker, for going through that, I think you did a really nice job of kind of hitting the high points for you guys, and hopefully you found that beneficial. What I wanted to kind of talk about initially here too, was really the process that we've gone through over the last few months with staff, and then also with the Good Neighbor Meeting that we had. And I think a really, I think a really important piece of this development and this project is that the kind of iterative nature, and we always do that, but in this one, I think we've done a really good job of working through those issues. As Ann alluded to, we talked about the possibility for access off of North Scott, we looked at that both from a sensitive areas, so for topography and wetlands, and just kind of general logistics, getting that connection from this area here by like lots 45, 46, and going east to North Scott. That just was proving exceedingly difficult with street grades that we would have ended up with, we wouldn't be code compliant with those. And the landowner was interested in keeping this northeast corner out of the development, not developed. I guess another important point, our north boundary is the south boundary of Harvest Preserve. All the land that we're developing is actually not owned by Harvest Preserve, it's owned by an entity called Monument Farms. So those two are separate entities, and that conservation easement that Councilperson Craig referred to is, does stop at that north boundary of our development. Harvest Preserve does own currently this piece of land in the northwest corner, but it's not part of their overall conservation area. So there's kind of some important distinctions there that I don't think, and we had the Good Neighbor Meeting, a lot of the public didn't understand that too, that there was a line where Harvest Preserve stops and doesn't continue all the way to Rochester Avenue. So unfortunately, that took some people by surprise at that Good Neighbor Meeting, where they kind of didn't understand that. So to kind of go, like I said, to kind of look at what we had presented at the Good Neighbor Meeting, and I'll kind of give you the, try to give you the pretty picture that we showed them at that meeting, it kind of tells the story a little bit better, you kind of can see what was preserved woodland-wise, and you know, the white boxes are kind of what we're showing for generally correspond with the lots. And we did have those six homes that were fronting on Rochester, they would have had a rear, required rear access off the back, and been a little narrower, smaller house. We were bringing those in as a way to further increase that housing diversity in Iowa City and get a different price point house-wise. Otherwise, the development itself is pretty close, we were envisioning a different trail connection at that time, and I can explain that a little bit later, but generally, that's what we were, what we were proposing. We had that meeting with the neighbors, it was really well-attended, we had 24, like, homeowners sign in, that included like husband and wife, or two people on the same address sign in. So it was really, really well-attended meeting, a lot of good questions from the neighbors. And I'd say the biggest takeaway we got from that is, you know, the one we expect, we had questions about traffic, we had questions about, you know, how it was gonna change, and how much of the woodland was gonna be impacted, and those ones, and then the one that really, really kind of stood out to us was those six lots on Rochester, and what that impact would be for people who live south of Rochester and are used to looking at that wooded area now, that would go away and they would be seeing houses, and for the residents of Rochester Hills or Larch Lane, it would impact, you know, their views as they look to the east into that wooded area that's there currently. So we kind of regrouped after that meeting and looked at that, that feedback, and felt like, given, given that opposition and the concerns that people brought up about those, that area, we eliminated that from the development. So we came out of that Good Neighbor Meeting, kind of redesigned a little bit, took those six lots away, and so we get to where we're at today. The other piece that came up in talking to staff and understanding it a little bit better is that existing conservation easement, which shows up in blue on a lot of the maps here on the west side, that precludes any utilities from crossing it and any trail or any kind of other access. So that kind of forced us to take and snake that trail around to the north, and to do that, we worked closely with Harvest Preserve and kind of took a few days, but got an agreement in place to allow that pedestrian access across that piece of land that they now own to get that connection to Calder Park. So that, I think, kind of highlights that process that we've gone through on this one to really, you know, bring you a project that we feel really good about and feel like that we've done what we can to kind of address those concerns that we heard in that public input process. You know, I think the things that we're really excited about on this project is really that connection to Calder Park. Not only is it, it's good for the people who live over on the north side of Rochester, or Ralston Creek, gives them a way to get to the south, but for our development and for the people who end up living here, whether they're in the single-family homes or on Ewing's parcel on the corner, to have access to a neighborhood park that's right there is a really nice benefit, and also it provides a nice kind of scenic trail that then follows Hickory Trail into Hickory Hill Park, you know, just down the road. The other piece that we think is really good about that connection is when we look at the distance, if you're a, you know, an elementary school student who goes to Lemmy, now you have a way to kind of connect through and cut through and walk. I looked at it quick today, and that cuts a mile off the walk, like from Calder Park to Lemmy right now, goes down to a mile instead of two miles. For those of us who aren't school age, but maybe we want to go get a Dairy Queen, it takes three-quarters of a mile off that, so that goes a mile instead of being a mile and three-quarters to you, so. And as one of the neighbors said, now he can take his e-bike to Blackstone, so, you know, lots of benefits for all ages. But yeah, we feel really good about that connection and think, you know, ideally, you know, as the bluffwood plan showed, there would have been a vehicle, a road, kind of connecting those two areas across Ralston Creek. With Harvest Preserve being there, that's no longer an option, but this is probably the next best, next best piece. The other parts I wanted to just highlight for you quick, and then I'll let you ask me the questions, because I'm sure you have some. Go through some of these quick to get there. One thing I wanted to highlight too, again, that, I don't know how well you can see it, but the scale of this development in the scale of the overall neighborhood, and when we looked at that area to the north here with the pink boundary on it, that's Harvest Preserve, again, it's in that permanent easement, and that will stay, and then, you know, our development is, again, it's 65 acres, we're removing 14 acres of woodland, but as Parker, you know, pointed out, there's 33 acres that's being set aside in those outlots, they'll be kind of conserved forever. I think that's, again, an important, important piece to kind of see as we balance those needs of development versus preserving what's there. And again, there's a lot of desire to be on the east side, there's not much land available for development on the east side, and this is essentially an infill development, it's taking that last piece that's available here, where there's existing infrastructure in place, and we're making use of that road and utility infrastructure that's there. The other piece that really, I think is important to highlight is Outlot B is the only piece of this property that has mature, mature trees on it. So if you look at the aerial photos going back to the 30s, this was pasture, the archaeological study shows that there was two farmsteads over in Outlot A close to Rochester Avenue. If you go back there and poke around, you can find kind of the remnants of those are there, but most of this land was pasture at some point, other than the woods in Outlot B, and that's the original kind of mature, mature trees, and that's stained and being preserved, and then again, I think that's a really important takeaway, what we achieved in this design. The question I think probably came up a little bit about the trail and crossing Ralston Creek. We'll be doing the study as part of the plating process to determine if that's a bridge or a culvert, and look at what we need to do, there'll be DNR and Corps of Engineer permitting required for that, same with the wetland impacts that we do have, we've started that permitting process with the Corps for those mitigation impacts. As Parker said, we're mitigating off-site, and that's the Corps of Engineers' preferred method for that wetland mitigation, we'll be taking advantage of the wetland banks that exist now in the Johnson County area to do that, so we'll be purchasing credits there. I think, I think those are the kind of the highlights that I wanted to hit, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or if there's stuff you want to hear from Joe or Heather, just holler and we'll do that.
All right, I have a couple of questions for you. So the aerial photos you said showed that Outlot B, those trees existed pre-1930's aerial photographs?
Correct, yep.
And so the remainder, that was all pasture land, so that's just trees that have voluntarily grown up since that time, since the pastures have been taken away?
Yeah, and actually, if you look, it's pretty dramatic when you start looking at like the 90s and on.
Did you do any tree inventory, or do you just have an idea what's in there?
Tree inventory-wise, as far as the woodland areas, we use the aerial mapping to determine those boundaries and a little bit of field survey. We did consult with Impact 7G on the wetlands, and as part of that, they did a threatened endangered species analysis too, so they do have a little bit more information, and it's in their report as far as what species are in there.
Okay. Speaking of trees, I noticed one of the public comments was about, you must have Bradford pears in your planting schematics.
I was gonna look at that, and I don't know if they're in the...
Yeah, because I just wondered where they got that, and...
Yeah, I'm not sure if those are in there, because typically, city forestry would not allow those to be in there, and I know Tyler's reviewed the landscape plan, but I'm wondering as if over the years, there haven't been Bradford pears planted out there that exist?
I just wasn't sure of the reference, so I wanted to make sure I asked you about that.
Okay.
Yeah, I've lived there 20 years.
And then also, on the six houses that were originally proposed for Rochester, you said that that was gonna have a different price point, were those gonna be more affordably priced? Is that, was that your intent?
I would assume so, just based on the lot size, so because we were fronting Rochester, we can't get driveway access directly onto Rochester, they would have been rear-loaded with a shared drive, which let us get down to, like, we went down to a 55-foot-wide lot, so it just would have been a smaller footprint house on those six lots.
And merely because this is an area that I find very curious, the main concerns the residents spoke of, the neighbors of the adjacent property owners, was that it would interfere with their view shed, property that they don't own.
Yeah, view, loss of trees, because it would take, we would have had to take out more trees to build those lots, and kind of concerns about the impacts of those houses on their property values and their views, yep.
All right, thanks, Mike. Anybody else have questions on the commission from Mike? Is there anybody else, Mike, from your team that would like to speak? For Joe or Heather?
By the way, Heather is the mysterious person that I emailed.
It is.
When she wrote back to me, she signed her name, so, and then I heard Heather, I went, "Oh."
I know, and I said, "Oh, I need to get back to you." I took a few days off. I'm Heather Ropp, I am the Regional Director for Ewing Properties, covering the eastern Iowa Territory, and I'm here to answer questions about our proposed area in this development.
Could you just give us a few seconds on your proposal? So what would be there, what would it look like?
Sure. So what we are, we currently have two communities complete in the Johnson County area, we have one under construction in North Liberty, and what we are proposing here on the east side is 55 and above housing, it's an ownership model, so these aren't rentals, they don't become Airbnbs, these are owned and operated and controlled by the owners or the members that live there, they're shareholders, they're buying a share into the entire property. We are gonna have a mix of individual homes, patio homes, so slab-on-grade homes, optional basements, universal design concepts, so they're designed to age and place. We're also gonna add a few duplexes in there, just so we can get some more density on the site, again, universal design concept, duplexes, and then a two-story building which sits at the corner of Rochester and Scott. They will be ranging in size from 1,000 square feet up to potentially 1,800 square feet. Again, the universal design concept, designed to age and place, underground parking, and then the entire community will enjoy the common spaces that'll be on the property. So in the two-story building, there will be a great room, there will be a workshop in the garage area, in the clubhouse, fitness center, kind of an outdoor grilling area, meeting spaces, game rooms, other activities to do, and we, really, what we're promoting is community. Yes, we're building buildings and beautiful places to live, but our mission is to provide a community where people know each other, they interact, as people get older, sometimes they lose that social aspect of their life or that dependence, and we are here to bring that back to the people in the community.
And how many units are you hoping to build there?
Oh, boy. You probably know that better than me, I think 28 or 29 in the two-story building, 12 individual homes, and then six homes in the duplexes.
And it's a 55-only?
It is, well, I think the state of Iowa has a law that 20% of that population can be under the age of 55, over the age of 18, but there is a minimum income requirement to financially qualify to live in any of our communities.
I have a question about parking, which in Iowa City is one of the first things you look at. The visitor parking for 47 units seems, can you park on the street there?
So the two-story building will have heated underground parking, so the people that are shareholders in the building will have a dedicated parking spot below, and it should allow for a second car parking below. The garages will have attached two-car garages, and then they'll have some driveway access. And then we usually try to allow for a common parking area near the clubhouse for visitors. I haven't really seen a parking plan yet to give you any input on that.
Okay, well, there's some parking designated here, and it just didn't seem like, you know, if you got three book clubs meeting on the same night, you're in trouble.
Yeah, go ahead.
On the parking wise, the street, the private drive there is a 26-foot-wide private drive, so that's a typical city street, so it would allow for parking on one side, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
That helps a lot.
Is there a pool in the clubhouse?
We are proposing an outdoor pool.
Don't be sending her any...
There you go.
Getting in for you.
And this is all independent living?
It is, it is independent living, yep.
But you said that they would be able to purchase the properties, right, so that when someone passes away, then the property goes back to the company and then they can resell it? Is that how it works?
So, being in a senior housing cooperative, the members are, they're shareholders, so they're buying a share of the entire property, when somebody passes away, they can set it up however they want, they can set it into a trust, an estate, a transfer on death, and when that happens, it's the responsibility of the community manager to resell that person's share, and it goes back to the beneficiary named, but it's all handled, the transactions all handled in-house by the community manager on site.
But then, could someone younger come and stay, or it would always have to be someone...
Yeah, visitors are definitely allowed and encouraged, but to live there full-time... Yeah, you, visitors are definitely allowed and encouraged, but to live there full-time, you'd have to be over the age of 18.
18?
Mm-hmm.
So let's say, so then this is not a senior community?
Ownership, 55 and above, but visitors that are staying, you know, maybe with somebody for a long-term, have to be of age, over the age of 18. But grandkids can come, you know, we want people to use the community clubhouse, guests can come, but long-term, living there, over the age of 18.
Okay. Did, Mike, did you say that there's going to be parking in the street, in one side of the street?
Yeah, it would be wide enough to allow parking on one side of the street.
On, you mean in Rochester?
No, on that private drive that...
Oh, okay.
On the back.
Okay.
Yep, on this private drive, there would be parking in, you know, it's going to be limited where there's driveways, but people can get two cars in the driveway and the garages, so.
Thank you, sorry, I misunderstood.
No problem.
Mike, while you're there, what is the vision that you have for the maintenance of all the woodlands?
It would be, what I would probably refer to, I think the language that Joe and we would defer to would probably be similar to what Tamarack Ridge has, where it's monitored by the homeowners association, because that's who own the...
So there is a homeowners association?
There's a homeowners association. And then the typical language that's in there is invasive species removal can happen, dead trees can be taken down, and you can use it for recreational purposes, but not, you know, someone can't come in there and legally just start clearing or anything like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Additional questions for Heather or Mike?
Yeah, and I'll just put in a little more tidbit, which I didn't explain, which is, other than the community, our community is maintenance-free. So our community manager and our maintenance technician on-site will be handling all the maintenance of the members living there, not only outside the home, but everything inside the home as well. So it's maintained, it's in good working condition, really in sale-ready condition at all times. And that's a big part of what we're putting together here.
I have a few more questions.
Sure.
So you mentioned heated parking underneath, so that's not sustainable at all. So I was wondering if this is going to be, have solar panels or EV charger, charging stations for cars or anything like that?
We will probably put in, you know, as requested, some of the early people that purchase, if they have an electric vehicle, we will work with them and plan on that. Since the garage in a co-op is a community space, we would have to figure out how to monitor or meter that outlet specifically for use of an electric car. But definitely something we'll consider. It's becoming more and more popular, you know, electric vehicles, so. And then individual homes and the duplexes, that's something, if people purchase early, they really get a personalized interior of their home and we can build that into the construction, is that electric charger in their garage.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you, Heather.
Perfect, thank you.
Joe, do you have anything?
I can step up and answer any questions you guys have.
Any questions for Joe?
Joe Clark, developer.
I have a question. So Mike, when Mike mentioned the trail, he was talking about how convenient it would be to get to the Dairy Queen and all that. But sometimes where those, some of those trails can be very hidden and then people don't really know that they are there to use them, are there, are you planning on having like a sign or something to...
It's going to be on the city, I think, to... I mean, what sort of, you want a sign coming in from...
I'm wondering, because sometimes there are trails that...
We haven't talked about it, but I assume that this will be visible from everybody that obviously lives in this development and then from Tamarack and the Hickory Trail areas, that people will know that there's a trail coming back through there. I think the city could probably put something over in Calder Park that says there's trails going back through there. There'll probably need to be a connection from Hickory, Tamarack, and Hickory that comes down through Calder Park. So I'm guessing people will see the trail heading down through there.
Any questions for Joe? Seeing no, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, this is a public hearing. If any member of the public would like to address the commission on this particular application, now's your opportunity. I'd ask you to restrict your comments to five minutes or less. And if you come forward, please sign in and then let the commissioners know your name. So now's your opportunity, anybody who wants to speak. And I will be timing and I'll warn you when you get close to five minutes. Go ahead, sir.
My name is Larry Lubert. I'm in your records as Lawrence Lubert. I live on the corner of Heron and Rochester, facing this development. I've lived there for 22 years. The house I have there, I built, had built, it was a Prado Homes home in 2000. I bought, before I bought that lot, I researched the whole area about what could go in there. And it's been great, because I had wildlife, too much wildlife, actually, all these years. I think it's a great plan. I like the idea. In terms of, there was, I think I heard a question earlier about trees, and I'll just use this mouse here. This area up in here, those are all, that was all pretty much bare. There were cows across the street when I bought the house, and it was bare. It was all grassland and cow pasture.
And what year was it you moved in again?
Pardon?
What year did you move in again?
2000.
Oh, boy, okay.
Moved in in June, got laid off in August.
But you're still there!
And the builder, I knew, I was at ROB, I knew at the courts that I was probably going to lose my job. It was getting moved to Germany. I'm a retired engineer. And the builder, who is now deceased, was worried I would walk out on him. And I said, no, I signed the contract and went out of the contract. If I have to sell the house, I'll just lose a lot of money. But anyway, I think it's a really good plan. I was a little bit concerned about this area, way off on the end, small houses. I thought that was awful tight because of the terrain, but it sounds like that's gone, so. I'm also a fairly serious bicycle rider, so the trail will be nice. And if you, historically, if you've got any questions, I can answer lots of questions. But mainly, the plan doesn't really affect any of the really mature trees that have been there for a long time. I think it's a really great plan from that standpoint. The only mature trees I've seen that would be affected are the ones that kind of died already anyway, just because of wind and stuff like that. But it's just a really good layout for the area. There's a little bit of wetland up in this area, they're getting close to some wetlands up in there, but I think they know how to deal with that. Have you got any historical questions I can probably answer?
I think we're good. Thank you very much. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm Rex Hummels, I'm his neighbor.
Yeah, if you would, when the meeting's over, you can just sign in. Thank you.
I like the development as well, I just have one concern, and that is, with the corner right there, where Heron runs into Rochester. We're in a cul-de-sac, that's the only way we can get out there. And I looked at the traffic study and it says there's going to be 131 more trips and about 300 more cars and all that. And it decided at that intersection, your average wait time would increase by nine-tenths of a second. I find that wildly implausible, because all these cars are going to be coming out on there. Everybody from the senior centers, many coming out that corner, the vast majority of people in the project are going to be coming out that corner. There's just a stop sign on either side there. And while I'm in favor of the development, what I would like to see is, you see on the senior center there, where the private drive is, it looks like there's a short shot there out to Scott. I understand why you can't do it in the far northeast, why can't you put a little road right there? So then people could get in the senior center from Scott, they could get out senior center from Scott. As it is now, if you're in the senior center and you want to go down to Scott, you take your private drive over here, take a left, come down to Rochester, take a left, come down north Scott, take another left, you're going through three intersections just to get out of town. That way, where if you have one little shot there, take one left, you're done. And it would alleviate some of the congestion here at that corner. I know it says that, you know, in the study that it's not that busy an intersection. It can be busy, in the mornings and at night, Heron there, where the traffic on Rochester's going by and you're waiting to get on there. And it just seems common sense tells me, when you put a whole bunch more people out there, like 300 more cars and 843 trips, that's going to be a bitter, busy intersection. And we're over on Heron and Goldfinch, that's a cul-de-sac. We have no other way to get out except there. So I'd suggest either doing a little blurb out of there to Rochester, or the minimum, take Rochester Avenue and it's three lanes right where it runs into Scott. Make it three lanes all the way back to Teton Circle, so you can at least have a turn lane to get out of there. Otherwise, I'm afraid people are going to be waiting at that intersection all day. That's my suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
He has a point. He, that's a very accurate point. I've complained to the city a number of times about Rochester's your drag strip after dark, coming from that four-way stop at Scott heading west. I've seen cars doing 50, 60 miles an hour through there. I've seen several accidents over the years.
Oh, they won't this summer on Rochester.
Pardon?
They won't this summer on Rochester.
By Regina!
Or next!
Come, come to my house! Especially when the motorcycle season is in. I mean, they come flying out of that four-way stop heading west. So he's got, he's got a definite point about the traffic. That is something I didn't think about.
All right, thank you.
But there is, there is potentially, I mean, the city is reserving the option someday of putting a roundabout there, and that might actually help that kind of thing.
This is a public hearing. Is there any other member of the public who would like to address the commission on this? Ma'am? Please sign in and state your name.
My name is Joe Scott, and I live in Rochester Hills on March Lane. I don't have any objection to the plan. I think it looks really pretty good. And I'm glad that you took the six houses out. That would have been my objection, because that would impact our area. Just one thing that I think about when I look at the number of homes in here, and it addresses kind of the traffic on Rochester. The speed limit right now is 35. And I would hope that the city would change that speed limit to 25. Already, it's hard for us to get out of our area. People do just come flying down Rochester. And I know sometimes I've started out and somebody will just come, you know, and I've got to really stop and to prevent an accident. So I hope that if this development is approved, that you will seriously consider lowering that speed limit to 25 with that much traffic that this would entail. So that's my only comment.
Unfortunately, as much as we'd like to, we don't have the authority to reduce speed limits. But that is certainly something that you can address the city with and ask that. But unfortunately, studies have shown that lowering the speed limit does not slow down traffic. You know, it's other factors actually slow down the traffic, not this, not the speed limit sign. So sadly.
You, you don't have any in with the city?
We have zero in with those folks. They just look at us.
But the city council can do anything they want. So when this goes forward to the city council, that would be a time you could bring up...
Okay, thank you. I know our area's been concerned about those speed limits for some time, and this would make it even more...
Rochester's a very long road, so certainly that traffic circle, if they put that in, will be very helpful. But there's lots of traffic calming measures they can, they can try. So it won't happen for the next two years because of all the road construction in Rochester. But certainly let the city council know, so they have your feedback about trying to calm that traffic.
Okay, I think we've tried that, but it didn't work.
Well, don't give up. That's the, that's the key to everything, persistence.
Okay, I can be persistent, thank you.
Is there anybody else like to address the commission on this? Seeing no one coming up to the podium, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this application?
Move approval.
Is that a motion, does that include the...
With the staff's recommended...
Recommendations that are listed in the agenda packet?
Correct.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion by science. Is there a second?
Townsend.
Second by Townsend. Discussion? When I saw this drawing, if any of you folks remember, the development on Cherry, that new development going on Cherry between like Pepper and Gilbert, looks remarkably like that with a multiple family townhouses, a looped road with single-family dwelling. And so, probably means nothing other than, I think that's looking, progressing very nicely there. And so, that put me to be predisposed to this because it reminded me so much of it. And I think the neighbors' concerns have largely been addressed. Traffic is always an issue, that's why people need to be persistent addressing the city council about traffic calming. And I will support this application. Discussion?
Well, I just want to, I just want to commend everyone involved in this project. I don't recall ever having seen a proposal that matched the comprehensive plan and the neighborhood plan vision so well. On the one map where you overlaid the two, it's almost, it's almost identical overlay, which is, which is amazing. So I commend, I commend you for, for doing this conservation design, preserving the sensitive areas and the woodlands and trying to maximize, you know, condense. And that's why I don't have a problem with smaller lots, because we, that's the price we pay to get some more open space. So I, I'm just very supportive of it. I'm always concerned about these outlots, because they always say, well, the outlots are just going to be there and then, and then, you know, five years later, someone comes before, there's a plan for the outlaw. And so I don't see anything in here that requires conservation easements. I hope that that will be, I'll trust staff that that's going to be taken care of along the way. But in general, I think it's a really quite amazing plan. And I also think this may be the first time we've had a development of this size where we had neighbors who were here who were all generally supportive of the project. So I think that speaks a lot to the quality of it also.
I think that, you know, I'm an east sider, and I like all this development on the east side of town. I think the combination of, you know, the senior living with the single-family housing is a good one. And I wish that the affordable option, you know, I understand why it was taken out. I wish some component of it could have stayed, but I'm in support of the plan.
I also, I also agree that I would like to see those six units that were going to be affordable to stay. And I know that senior living is a big issue, as big as affordable housing here in Iowa City. I know Oggnol has a very long waitlist. But I think the affordable units should have stayed in the project.
Well, I, I think that it wasn't considered affordable housing, it was less pricey housing. So that is different from affordable...
It's affordable for a different income level. We have to remember that affordability, we need to have affordability for all income levels, not only for low, lower-income people, right?
So, but I understand what you're saying.
So let's not, let's not mix those up. But I think it's great that there are some, finally some 55 and over housing that isn't just dependent living, that's, because there are quite a few seniors that enjoy the, enjoy being able to do what they want to do and still have a place they can call their own. So I think this is a great project for the more mature adults in the community.
Peggy, anything?
I think it's great.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by...
I have one more comment, sorry. The corner, what he said about the corner, that's very true. The corner can get very, very busy. So I don't know if the city has thought about adding a light there or something like that, because sometimes the, it's a four-way stop sign, and it can get really busy, especially very early in the morning and at 5, around 5, when it's, you know, the time when everybody leaves. So adding 33 more cars to the, to the traffic, that's going to have an impact.
I agree. Four-way stops are so inefficient, because everybody just sits there and looks at each other. So, anyway, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously. Item number six, consideration of meeting minutes, June 15 through 2022. Are there any major additions or corrections to the minutes as listed in the agenda?
Move approval.
Got a motion by Craig. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Townsend. Discussion?
That was such a short meeting, how could you leave anything out?
All those in favor approve, for approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously. Number seven, planning and zoning information. Ann?
Just one update.
Just one update. At the last city council meeting, the council adopted the code cleanup text amendment. And at this point, I'm kind of failing to remember what was even in that, but there were minor, minor code changes. That's the only update I have.
Does anybody have a previgent for Ann?
There was a lot of cleanup.
There was a lot of it.
She's not eligible for senior housing yet.
Based on that definition, I'm getting closer than I.
Any additional planning and zoning information? Parker, Sarah, Ann?
Just the election of officers.
All right, election of officers. Which office do you want to start with, folks? It's the feeling of, so goes chair. Is there a motion for chair?
I think you've done such a wonderful job. I think we should just appoint you for another term.
I would second that.
All right, so a motion by Townsend, second by Sines for Hinch. You guys are glutton for punishment. Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously. Next office is for vice chair. Is there a motion for a nomination for vice chair?
Again, I think Mark would be a great vice chair. He's, you were what, secretary this time?
No, he is vice chair.
I think I would like to see a woman.
You've done such a wonderful job.
I think I would like to see a woman. So I would propose Susan as the vice chair.
Well, we have a motion, so we'd have to see if there's a second first. Is there a second to the motion for Sines? So we got a motion by Townsend. We have a second by Elliott. Discussion. Since we have a motion and a second, we have to vote on it. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we have, I abstain. So we have four ayes.
Four ayes, one nay, and one abstention.
One nay, padrone, and one abstention, Sines.
It passes.
Motion passes. We need a nomination for secretary.
Thank you.
For secretary. Phoebe Martin was the secretary. I'm not quite sure of the duties of secretary, so.
They are rough.
Do, do we?
I'd like to nominate Billy for secretary.
I think technically we need to fill it, because it's in the bylaws.
So we have a motion for Townsend for secretary by Craig. Is there a second? We have a second by Sines. Discussion. All those in favor of, what was the motion again? For Billy Townsend. All those in favor of Billy Townsend for secretary signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Number eight, is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
I don't know who's first, so I'll say Elliott. Motion by Elliott.
Yeah, give that one to Maggie here first.
Second by Townsend. Second by Townsend.
She was.
And no discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. No nays, message passes unanimously. We're adjourned.